For coming this evening in person. We've got a few people in the room and it looks like we've got about 13 people on Zoom. So I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, May 24th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. So thank you, everyone, for attending. A couple of things in my board comments. Just to shout out, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. I saw some great signs out and about throughout the community and on some of our school properties. I participated in a video that I sent over to Dr. Adley thanking all our teachers on behalf of the Board. So just at the Board table on behalf of the Board, I'd like to again say a thank you to all our teachers for all that they've done, not just over the last year, but over the last couple of years through COVID. Truly a dedicated, passionate group of people when you think of what we've been through. I dare to utter the words hybrid, remote, in-person, and every other iteration thereof. So, but the sun is shining, we're in springtime and without masks. But a big shout out and a thank you to all our teachers once again. Tomorrow is Nurse Appreciation Day. So anyone that sees or interacts with any of our nurses, I think a big, I would say be cautious with COVID, but a big thank you, a big hug, a big high five to our nurses for all that they've done in coordination with our teachers and administrations to keep our children and our staff safe. And a big special thank you to our leader on the nursing side, Alisa Kosucci. It's an incredible team and when you think of what they've gone through over the last year, not just in taking care of our children themselves and their family, but all the metrics and tracking that goes along with it. So a big thank you to our nurses tomorrow on Nurse Appreciation Day. So with that, what I thought I'd do is tee up a little bit in my public comment, the conversation that will ensue later in the agenda on the further discussion and possible action of lights. So just a couple of highlights and some conversation and work that's been done since the last meeting based on some questions that came out. So the goal here, and we'll get into it when we move to the agenda item, is to move forward without a specific agreement in place. The goal is to move toward administrative management of the fields based on the fact that the district has care, control, and custody of the school buildings and fields. We do the management of the fields now, I believe we do it really well. I think we can do it going forward. One of the goals would be to continue to review the Darien High School field usage lights on an annual basis and make sure we hear from anyone on an annual basis, and I'm sure we will if there are any challenges throughout the year. I think what the Board will do will look to the administration for administrative guidelines in any update to the facility usage policy based on these guidelines. We have a good facility usage policy in place that works. There are things in there that require certain things be done and there are certain questions that are asked. So there may be some changes we want to make to that, but also I think some administrative guidelines can also be put in place, and that's actually outlined in the facility usage policy. I'll give you an example. One of the things that I think can be an administrative guideline is regardless of what time we decide to turn the lights on, the practices must end 15 minutes before the lights go off to clear the fields for safety reasons. So that's one example of an administrative goal that we could put in place. And I think that makes sense to clear those fields. You can also look at the limit of Saturday and Sunday lights to specific playoff games. And the sound system is limited to Darien High School use only for those games. So that's something I wanted to make clear. In the application, they can apply if they need a sound system, but again, that's an administrative decision. Goal is to revise the one Darien Planning and Zoning Regulation to permit groups in accordance with BOE policy to play on the field. It really would be around CAC and FCAC games where we could host even if Darien High School is not participating. The other process is an application to revise the planning and zoning permit around the light-off time. So those are the things we're going to discuss later on. Just some clarification based on some questions that came up from the Board member and community members. Noise restrictions are governed by Connecticut General Statute 22A-69. However, noise created by onsite recreational or sporting activity, which is sanctioned by the state or local government, provided that noise discharge from exhaust is adequately muffled to prevent loud or explosive noises is the exemption. So while the town ordinance refers to state regulations, the town sanctioned sporting permits are exempt from that Connecticut General Statute. Some things that I looked into and some other folks have called me and given me some information on. The youth sport practices are during the week. Their games are predominantly on the weekends. I believe youth lacrosse at times plays a weekday game. They are playing within, they're playing within the timeline that's outlined currently. The youth groups do not have access to the sound system. And again, that would have to go through the facilities use application. The other thing I found out is lights are controlled by an app and can be turned off if the field is not being used. So that is something we can manage. And I can keep the lights on until a specific time if the field is not being used. I worked with Chief Anderson, Dr. Knopf, and the Health Department, Jeremy Ginsburg, just to clarify some questions. The Darien specific noise ordinance is specific and applies to fixed or stationary devices. The Health Department takes the lead on the measurement of noise. The Police Department gets involved when it's more of a breach of peace. That can be associated with parties and noises going on after 11 o'clock. What are ordinances based on what we follow? Again, I stated the state statute would apply here. But again, noise created by onsite recreational sporting activity, which is sanctioned by the state, is exempt. Our land use regulations have a lights-out time. There is no lights-out time in Darien zoning regulations. Each of the country clubs has special permit uses. And there are probably different restrictions and limits based on the location of those clubs and their facilities. So I think that's it in terms of the application. The other thing that I just want to make a comment on, and I think it's important because I've seen stuff on social media, I've gotten an email, I've gotten a couple of phone calls, and I know there's concern, which I understand, about the Board not caring or not interested in the sleep habits or the time that children go to sleep at night. And I think that's far from the truth. I think over the last couple of years, we've proved that our goal is on a regular basis, the care and safety of our children. So for people to say we don't care about our children or what time they go to bed is false, and it's just spin, and it's just stupid social media gossip. All right? At the end of the day, if your child is playing with one of the youth groups, all right, that's a partnership between the coach, the youth group, and you. We are here to see if we can make the facilities available to the community as they're a community asset, and a lot of funds were raised to have these lights put on in the fields. We have our administrative needs from a school standpoint, they're put in place. Not much there is changing, there'll be a few more games played, but there's specific times that these games have to be played. But for anyone to say that we don't care about our children's well-being is just false. And I'm actually not going to put up with it if it continues to be said in public comment. All right? Again, if you're not happy with the time of the practices or the time of games, that's between you, the youth group, and your student, and your parent, and your child. All right? We're making the fields available for youths. But if your kids are participating in a youth group sport, that's between you and the youth group. All right? So with that, we will move on to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. For participants in person, please wait for the chairperson to acknowledge and call each participant to the mic. For participants via Zoom, please click the raised hand option. The facilitator will acknowledge and unmute each participant. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to comment. Will we start in person?
Yes, thank you, Michelle. Anyone that wants to come up to the podium that's in the room?
My name is Alberta Vandenberg, now live on 15 Linda Lane. I was dumbfounded when I read your proposal for the use of the high school athletic fields. At our last meeting, you had stated that you were working in the spirit of the agreement. You also stated that you would operate to really earn the trust of the community. It's not quite obvious that these statements are meaningless, to say the least. On the contrary, we just mentioned there, also the Board said that they were not responsible for the well-being of the young people in town. And that's also quite reprehensible. During my first visit to New York City in January 1962, the New York Times had a long article on suburban life and how lack of adequate supervision and proper town leadership had high school students' party deteriorate and resulting in car crashes leading to a scandal. That town was Darien. Now ironically, after 60 years, the Times can report that responsible and positive leadership is again non-existent in the same town of Darien. I beseech you, do not make a truth. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience?
Paul Mahowski, 371 Middlesex Road. Two weeks ago, two extraordinary things happened in this room. First, you pushed aside the recommendations of the administration, the professional educators, and pursued a path that advocates your role as educators. Comments and concerns about student mental and physical well-being were ignored or flippantly dismissed. Your discussion was almost entirely about accommodating the youth leagues and taking back care, custody, and control of your asset, the lights. The father of a DHS student who was a DHS neighbor informed you that his daughter had an auditory disability that made noise from games debilitating. Not one of you even acknowledged this problem. A mother who was not a DHS neighbor raised sleep and health concerns about elementary and middle school children playing sports until 9:00 PM on school nights. One of you said that when children go to sleep is, quote, "not either in the Board's purview or even in the administration's purview." Youth in our country and our town are under increased stress. Depression and suicides have reportedly increased. There will be unhealthy pressure on youth to participate in late-night practices at the expense of family dinners, homework, and sleep, and unhealthy pressure on parents to allow participation. A DHS neighbor recently described music from the field as, quote, "insanely loud preventing my kids from sleeping." Students and children who are neighbors of DHS will be subjected to additional nights of noise potentially disturbing homework and sleep. More unhealthy pressure. Perhaps you should bring mental health professionals into the discussion of evening youth sports and weekday evening noise. Second, you again pushed aside the recommendation of the administration, the professionals who actually administer the properties, and pursued a path that advocates your role as good neighbors. Shockingly, the current proposal permits games every night, Monday to Saturday, and lights for non-sports events, non-Darien groups, and for-profit groups, concerts, political rallies, private sports leagues, and more. The proposal that was published for this meeting sends a clear message to DHS neighbors and frankly, neighbors of every Darien school property that money assets and youth sports are your priority. Neighbors, including student neighbors, are expendable. One Board member suggested that the last five years were a test of whether neighbors could trust the Board. No, the last five years were a test of whether the guidelines could work for neighbors in the school, and they have, other than the noise. The test of trust came when the agreement expired. Noise is a nuisance and a major issue. It severely impacts the ability of neighbors to work from home, students to study, and children to sleep. A decision in a recent Connecticut private nuisance case awarding damages said, quote, "The ability to have peace and quiet inside one's own home is a minimal requirement for the plaintiffs who live in a residential neighborhood." If you move forward as proposed, you will have declared trust and cooperation dead. When trust and cooperation existed, disruptive noise resulted in a call to the administration. If you move forward as proposed, the noise will be monitored and appropriate action taken. You should also know that the PA system sound regularly exceeds the legal limit. I urge you to go back to the administration's original recommendations, be the educators you were elected to be, and the neighbors you would want to have. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience?
Babe Pachal, 369 Middlesex Road. As I said at the last meeting, we are largely happy with how the lights have been used to date and the added benefits in spirit, community, and that have come from their use. It is often nice to hear the games from our backyard, and the view of the annual fireworks display is wonderful. The main point I want to raise is twofold. One is that the relationship between the neighbors and the administration has held up well. And even through these discussions, we feel that the administration is listening to our concerns along with trying to balance other demands. The other is that I think that the nanny state comments at the last meeting are kind of a red herring. We defer to the administration on most things related to our kids and their relationship to the school. This should be no different. As I said before, this situation is an excellent opportunity for us to show our kids, our neighbors, and the town how we understand the difference between what we can do and what we should do, and how we value the thoughtfulness and expertise of our administration in whom we already place so much faith. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience?
Douglas Lockhart, I'm here on behalf of my mother, Janice Lockhart. She's recovering from COVID, so she couldn't make it. She's at 11 High School Lane. My parents have lived there for 40, 41 years, and they've seen a lot of changes over the years. They knew what they're getting into when they moved next to a school. They've always lived next to a school. It was great for property values, my father used to say. But they didn't quite expect, they didn't anticipate the sports complex. They didn't. My mother's very pleased with the current status quo. At least from what I can tell, I think she's pleased with the status quo. I think it's working well. We're blue wave supporters. We know it's good for, it's good for our students, it's good for our town and community. Obviously, she's concerned about the downsides of six nights of events, the traffic, the noise. You know, warranted concerns, because it's kind of, it's very much all new to her. So is it going to impact her life? You know, she's, she's living in this, you know, small, leafy community, and she doesn't want her life to change. So she's a bit concerned about this change. And I'm probably tempering some of her words. Some of my concerns were hosting games. Hosting games seem to be some of the most raucous, chaotic, exciting games because there's a lot at stake. You want to win a playoff game. And I'm not convinced that there's a lot of upside for the town and the community and the neighborhoods for hosting games. I'm not, I'm not really sure how that benefits the town. Also, for-profit organizations, how does that really benefit or the community? So obviously, we're looking for some trade-offs, some consideration. And we'd like to understand what kind of recourse, if there are events, if there are, if there are noisy, is it, you know, a call the next day? And is it going to be addressed, you know, the next day after the fact? There's a serious parking problem at the high school. Everybody knows it. Cars park on both sides of High School Lane. You know, the police do their best to keep them off to one side, but it's challenging in the main thing that corridor.
Doug, you're almost at time.
What's that?
You're almost at time. Okay, three minutes, thanks.
Okay, apologies, I didn't have prepared remarks. So thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you for speaking, Doug. Right, Michelle, anyone else in the audience, please? Thank you.
Hi there, Ryan O'Connor, 12 Linda Lane. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. As a member of the local community, let me begin my remarks by saying that my family considers ourselves lucky to call Darien our home. We have had a fantastic experience living here and hope to see our family grow up in this amazing place for many, many years to come. One component of the town that we feel, that we feel is particularly attractive is the youth athletic engagement as well as the high caliber of athletics all the way through the high school level. Having both grown up in Connecticut and having both played sports our entire lives, my wife and I fully understand, appreciate, and are avid supporters of the benefits over a lifetime and the sense of community that it engenders. To that end, I did want to voice a few of our concerns around the proposal in front of you, which would largely eliminate any restrictions around the use of certain high school athletic facilities into the evening hours. First, the current proposal would allow for any non-sports events to be hosted on the fields. Based off of my understanding, this could include any for-profit event, political rally, or even a concert series, to name a few examples. It seems to me that casting such a broad scope for permitted usage of these facilities seems out of line with any reasonable expectation of what an athletic field could and should be used for. Second, the idea that the current proposal would allow for out-of-town usage of our facilities for athletic as well as non-athletic events is concerning. Any small incremental benefit to Darien for allowing such usage seems to be far outweighed by the potential negative outcomes and costs throughout any day or night. Increased vehicle traffic, trash, and even out-of-town visitors who may not respect our community the same way that we do. To be super clear, we did support and even welcome the original amendment expanding the use of the facilities that was up for public discussion at the end of April. However, I felt compelled to come in front of you today given what I now see as a proposal that does not have enough consensus from the broader community that this decision will directly impact. It is in this vein that I humbly ask you to reconsider the amendment as it currently stands before going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, do you want to move over to Zoom?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for speaking. We'll continue this conversation on the agenda item. So we will move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Thank you for being present this evening. Thank you again, as the Board Chair mentioned. In this case, I'd like to recognize the members of the community who continue to support our teaching staff in so many ways. So thank you for everyone who participated, sent words of encouragement, organized different events last week in recognition of teacher appreciation. Like the Board Chair, I'd also just thank all our Florence Nightingales tomorrow. That's a special day for them. I have my own Florence Nightingale that I recognize also tomorrow. But thank you to that, and I will say a few words later. I want to thank the members of the RTM for approving the budget last night. Spring concerts are well underway, and there's lots of wonderful things happening. It's nice to see all those things in person again. Thank you to the Music Department. The middle school musicals, spring concerts were wonderful. Tokenique was also terrific, and I'm sure homeschool this evening will be just the same, and the others will be the same also. So thank you for bringing a wee bit of music and a wee bit of life and fatality and enthusiasm, passion to the school district through the words and sound of music. The Darien intramural aerobatics tournament will start. The first intramural tournament will be May 17th. That will be third grade through eighth grade, so that will be an internal intramural competition. So it's nice to see that first landmark that we hit. I want to congratulate Sashi Mehta and Victoria Caruso, who recently won the National Center for Women Information Technology Award at the high school. This award honors young women at the high school level for their computing technology-related achievements and interests. So we pass on our congratulations. I say a shout out to Tina Tramitano, who is our fourth grade teacher in our fourth grade class at Henley Elementary. They were one of the winning books in the Book Creators Global Be an Author Contest for their fabulous book, The Refugee Project. I'll send a link to the Board that they may be able to see that. I would like to provide an update to the Board on House Bill 5506 that was passed at the legislature. I want to say that we received an update. The town's ranked 1 to 58th wealthiest town will receive. Now, the correction is that of 58 is 70% of the excess cost. So with that, we will be short about $138,000, $139,000 from our excess cost. We budgeted 75, so the cap at 70, so that's much better. We don't know what the cap per student is at this particular point, so there's still, it's a better message than last week. And it's interesting, the message was the 58 came from 1 to 58. So there was an error from the state in the way it was reported out. So there you go. Despite the rain and the wind, thanks to everybody who organized and supported Henley happening. I think it just about cooperated for everyone. This weekend, this past weekend, the Quiz Bowl, they sent three teams to national championship in Chicago. They haven't been there, that's the first time they've been there since 2019. The report, it was great being back. The winners was from Virginia Middle School that are close colleagues or friends of our school and competition competitors at the middle school. Our teams performed admirably, and I would thank the staff in particular for continuing to coach our kids and also giving up their time to participate in all these visits and competitions that they travel to across the country and also that they host. The next DEI meeting is Monday, May 16th. Ken Shelton will be in time for that. And just a reminder, the last day for Henley and Royal is a half-day on Monday, June 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. All right, to our student representative reports.
All right. Good evening. The first thing we have is Student Council just held a new election. So the current executive board for the 2022-2023 school year will be President Shafe Salman, Vice President Keyan Levine, Secretary Kira O'Brien, and Communications Director Griffin Osevedo. And second, the Student Representatives, the Board of Education just attended our first Community Council meeting in which several things were discussed, the most important of which was possible changes to the school lunch programs that we are currently in process of talking with Ms. Dunn and Chartwell's about to ensure uniform selection of food across all four lunch waves, and the possibility of offering extended cafeteria food sales after school or implementing some sort of vending machine to ensure that people have the opportunity to buy food after school.
It's a really big week for the seniors at our high school this year. It's our last week of classes. Additionally, we have two weeks of AP testing, the first week just concluded, and our last few days will be Wednesday through Friday. And our senior prom is this Friday, and our junior prom will be next Saturday on May 21st.
That's everything. Thank you, thank you both. Congratulations to all those folks nominated and voted in on the Student Council. That's great.
You going to the prom?
Yes.
Okay. I don't read together necessarily, but I just.
We'll move on to approval of minutes. May have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 26, 2022. Mr. Seeny, second by Mr. Maroney, all those in favor, including Mr. Brown, who is in the camera. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Board Committee reports. Committee reports, Jill? Sure.
Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee continues to work quickly. We interviewed a bunch of architects on Monday night and will select our architect on Friday morning. And that's exciting.
That is very exciting. I heard that, and you were on school tours today also.
Yes.
Or a couple of days.
Yesterday, yeah, sort of, schools from each of the three architects who applied. And it was tremendously exciting. I got to see two schools, or two schools in Portchester, one in Pelham, and one next door in Norwalk. And not only is it exciting to see their buildings, it's really exciting to see the staff and the kids in other places and just to be reminded of why we do what we do somewhere else.
Good, thank you, Jill. There is a, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, there's a meeting, the Ox Ridge Building Committee. That continues to be on target. There's some discussion around the movement and based on staging needs and what's going on with the parking and grading and landscaping. We're going to hold off on, we're going to stage how the furniture gets moved in there and push it back a week. Jeff Adams and company are working on the technology. The teachers will pack up their classrooms in Ox Ridge and depart for the summer, and then that, all their belongings will be packed up, will be moved over to the new school. So they'll be doing their classroom setup at the end of August. So that's a little change in the schedule there. But again, delivery times, staging, but overall, we're in good shape with our vendors on the furniture. And Jeff is furiously working on all the technology and the switching challenges that have come with just, you know, supply chain management. And I think we're in good shape, it'll be. It'll be an exciting new school year for the Ox Ridge community. Yes.
Of course. Well, I should add, I should add that the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee will be going to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance on Monday and Tuesday of next week to request a large, the full appropriation for the schools with the idea of going to the Rules Committee the following week and then targeting June 6th. So you will hear about the building committee's request for dollars at those meetings.
And that is based on June 30th or June 31st submission deadline for the state for reimbursement on reimbursable costs.
Yes.
Yes.
The curriculum committee met two weeks ago, maybe? Yeah, two weeks ago. We talked, Keith Keeler did a great overview of the social cities department and their work there, and we talked a little bit about what is going to happen if it's summer. So if you have not tuned into that meeting, I encourage you to do so because it was, it was very informative, so.
And we'll tell you, I was not able to attend, but I did get great feedback and calls from people, so it was a great meeting. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Dr. Adley, current update on the schools?
So I will be brief this evening. And in fact, if I may, Alicia, Ms. Kasucci is, I believe, in her car at the moment. I said I would hand it over to. Are you in the car?
I, I'm not driving. I am parked.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'm safe. Just was waiting my turn.
Thanks. Thank you. So I said if I turn it over to Alicia, and I just want to mention at this point, if you don't mind, we have an agenda item at the end of our meeting this evening that recognizes the fact that sadly and regrettably, we will not have Alicia with us. Alicia will be relocating to the Georgia area to be with family, and we wish her well for that. I just want to say on a professional and personal level, there are very few people in this district who just goes so much the extra mile and leads with integrity and care and compassion. I want to thank Alicia. I'll tell you, I'll miss her professional and personal presence around the district. There's a reason that our own Florence Nightingales, our thoughts will highly often, and that's because of our leadership from our director. There's a reason why they're cared for with compassion as much as they are that the staff feel the same. And honestly, there's a reason why our schools remained open so long for what they did. It's not by chance without her leadership and her courage and tough decision-making, yet compassionate decision-making. And listen, she's in a, between a rock and a hard place, if anybody is, between the administration, the board, and understandably, parents. I just want to recognize her accomplishments while she is here in person, so to speak, and thank her, and we wish her well. And you're not gone yet, but I just want to take this wee moment while it avails itself just to thank you, Alicia. And I'll turn it over for you. There's not much to say tonight, I don't think, in that regard, but I'll turn the message over for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments. I'm a little overwhelmed. So if we must talk about COVID, we had 18 cases today and 38 cases reported over the weekend and through Monday. So our numbers are still kind of in the 50-per-week range, but, you know, it's expected to continue to kind of stay that way, if not rise a little bit and then maybe fall. So there's just a lot of variance out there right now. So our rules kind of remain the same, where if you're not feeling well, we ask that you stay home. You get your test. There's lots of test kits around. We're able to still distribute those through the schools, so parents just need to call their school nurses at their schools, and they can get a test if they want to. And then any unvaccinated individuals who are exposed to those who test positive need to stay home for five days. So it's kind of the same thing. Nothing's really changed a whole lot. We're just expecting these numbers to kind of stay where they are for a while. And that's it about COVID. Again, thank you for your kind comments, and I've really enjoyed my job here, even through all the stress of the past couple of years. And I'm very appreciative of all the support from everybody, from the administration to the board, to parents across Darien. So thank you.
Well, Alicia, before you start driving again on behalf of the board, I'd just like to extend a big thank you. I know my interactions with you as board chair were incredible. There's something about your calming demeanor, your confidence, and how you presented and your knowledge that I think really got us through in a calming way over the last couple of years. So I appreciate that. Your dedication and passion to our students and our staff is just incredible, your communication skills. So you will be missed, and I will say you will always be part of the Darien family.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment that comes from our weekly meetings. The state has not determined whether or not our heart is going to deal with COVID for the fall. So with, you know, I'll just say, they'll discuss that later. And then the point that most concerns me in many ways is the continued, possible continuation of having to continue to work in both domains and work with students at home through the classroom. So at some point, I'm talking an experientially a little bit, I'm not a doctor, but at some point, I'm hopeful that this is treated as a regular sickness or illness or flu or influenza. That we don't do that for those experiences. And I would hope that we wouldn't, because I do think that it's better in school, right? But if it can't be there, we can't be delivering education this way for every sickness, ailment, so on and so forth. So we remain, you know, on watch and see what we participate in the discussions and will advocate where we have to in terms of them making a decision. But the sooner they make that decision too, obviously, the more helpful it will be.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move on to update and discussion on extended school year program. This is Shirley Klein and this is Kristin O'Reilly.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce Kristin O'Reilly to the team. Our Program Director for Elementary and Special Education Student Services. Just a quick background, Kristin, to let the board know also, we're at year seven. When we first came here, we knew there were so many questions that families had for us about ESY and board members had for us ESY, beginning with how can we improve transportation? How can we look at groupings of students to have cohorts that really can work together? How can we ensure that we have teachers sending information over for ESY to the most effective way to really implement students' IPs and goals? And how can we also work with DSS to make sure that we ensure opportunity for all our students? So in year seven, we're always excited every year. We get better at what we're doing. And Kristin's delighted to be here that even during this time after COVID, where many schools were faced with having difficulty staffing their ESY, having difficulty finding related service providers, Kristin has managed to remarkably and successfully show you this evening how she was able to arrange that, put that together, and we're looking forward to an exciting 2022 ESY. I'll turn it over to you, Kristin.
Thanks so much for that. I think that the clicker might be next to you, so I might need a little.
Just while you get ready there. This is for members who maybe knew this is one of two annual presentations. I may say in a summer retreat, this may be something else that I would suggest that we do one a year, potentially in the fall or otherwise, but we'll leave that open for discussion. So you can listen with that. Is it necessary for both? So.
We're a good team. Thank you. Thanks so much, Shirley. Yeah, we're super excited for ESY this year, mask optional. It's been an interesting last couple of summers, so we're really excited to have the opportunity to welcome our students and staff back this summer for sort of that mask optional opportunity this year. So we're really looking forward to that. I know you guys have a long agenda tonight, as usual. So if you don't mind, I'm going to sort of just jump right into the presentation tonight, if that's okay. These first couple of slides should look really familiar to you from the presentation that we typically give in the spring. This is really the state's guidance to PPT teams in determining eligibility for students as a part of the PPT process. And really, just in short, the guidance is really sort of the nature and severity of the student's disability and the rate and regression of recruitment is really sort of the theme there. But really, an important part that I wanted to highlight on these two slides is sort of the continuation and the guidance that we've been supporting teams, PPT teams, and supporting our students through the last couple of years, really is sort of that COVID recovery process has been really, really important as we've been really thinking through our ESY service recommendations. We've been really, really thoughtful in spending a lot of time as teams, you know, supporting our students and thinking through how are we spending our summers, you know, certainly given the last couple of years, and that continues into this upcoming summer, and thinking through the best ways to support our students. So you'll see that reflected on the coming slides, but I really wanted to just take a moment here on these two slides and just highlight that for us, in addition to the state guidance that's been provided. At our two sites, Darien High School and Tokenique Elementary, ESY takes place from June 27th to July 29th. At DHS, students receive services from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And at Tokenique, students accessing the DLC program receive services Monday through Friday from 8 to noon. Students in the ELPK readiness program attend Monday through Thursday only, and they also attend from 8 to noon. And then, as you'll remember, following our parent and staff surveys from last year, we identified some goals during our August post-program presentation, and that's what Dr. Adley was referring to. Those goals helped shape our ESY 2022 program and our planning process, which will be outlined on the next slide. There's sort of a timeline slide there, and I'm going to go into that in more detail. Those goals include an increased need for communication with our district's transportation coordinator, Kate Barberry. And in support of that work, we've been really working closely with Ms. Barberry and our sort of building-based administrators who help in terms of the scheduling process, were able to give her the transportation information. Earlier this year, we had an April 15th deadline this round, this year, which allowed her to secure a greater number of vehicles going into the upcoming summer, which I also think was a little bit, had been a little bit more difficult anyway, just because of impacts to COVID. So that increased communication, I think, had a long-term impact for her anyway. And then in support of some of our additional goals, we also have been working on increasing our electronic structures. So in response to the surveys that we collected, both staff and parent surveys, we have also created an electronic daily attendance structure similar to the Darien Summer School structure that's used, and have created an opportunity for staff members to coordinate any revisions to staff and student schedules electronically rather than via hard copy as done in previous years. So those goals should look familiar from the post-program presentation in August. And then this timeline, which outlines the year-long planning, which begins really following immediately after our post-program presentation in August. Following receipt of the staff and feedback from both surveys, we initiate the planning process starting in September and begin conducting PPTs through the spring to determine ESY eligibility for students. And then beginning in the new year, we start posting to start filling and hiring those positions, which concludes in mid-February. Our building-based administrators begin the hiring process, which takes us through the winter. And then from there into spring, we really start communicating even more with our parent organizations, with CDSP, and also our district transportation coordinator, Ms. Barberry, so that we can ensure a lot of that transportation coordination, you know, is secure, ensuring families have what they need to arrive for ESY. Schedules from there are provided to staff and families the first week of May. Everything was coordinated with both staff and families last week. So parents should have received their schedules on Friday of last week on May 6th. And ELP schedules will be mailed home in the coming weeks. Laura Streetan had sent out some communication for ELP families last week. Orientation for staff will take place on June 24th, and then the first day for students is on June 27th. And then here's some comparison in terms of numbers, in terms of data from last year to this year. So again, this is as of April 30th, and these are PPT recommendations as opposed to the actual numbers that you'll see when we have our post-program presentation in August. So as of April 30th, our enrollment anticipated for the 2022 ESY program includes 75 students in ELP and 424 K through 12 students, which is an increase of nine ELP students and 55 K through 12 students from last year. We anticipate, however, that our actual number of attendee students or attended students going into the summer will likely be lower. That's in relation to what happened last year. We had about 74 students decline attendance last year, so just use that as a bit of a rough estimate. We'll have the actual numbers when we have our post-program presentation. I also just have to say I'm incredibly proud of the staff this year. During a high-needs shortage, we were able to maintain about roughly the same number of staff members this year compared to last year at 151 total staff members. So we have about five staff member difference compared to last year. That difference is accounted in about, we have one special education teacher difference, one paraprofessional difference compared to last year. One, we had one additional speech and language pathologist last year, and then two additional school psychologists last year. That sort of accounts in the difference between this graph and this graph. And then lastly, something that's a little different in this presentation compared to previous presentations, is we've included some budget information for your review. You can see we've projected, or we've included the projections for this year's budget information compared to last year's, in addition to some exciting grant funding that we've received this year compared to the COVID grant funding that we received last year. And thankfully, we have a chair tonight to help answer any questions that you have related to the budget information on this slide. But certainly, I can help answer any questions that you might have on this and any other sides that we covered tonight, too. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly. Great presentation. Thank you so much. Rich, just a quick question. You see, transportation costs not included there. Are the, all four Suburbans in use over the summer, and does that help our overall costs of transportation?
So three will be in use. We still have to have a driver for the fourth. So we're hopeful to have someone for ESY for the fourth, but not guaranteed. But all three will be definitely utilized.
This is Worm.
Thank you. This is great information. So it sounds like you probably had a little bit of trouble staffing, but I was curious, are you comfortable? Because looking at, I see that, you know, it's only five from last year, but the numbers of students attending from 2019 to now is significantly different, but your staff is not significantly different.
Yeah, so we were projecting that our actual numbers will be, will put us in line with what we came out to be last year. We are already having families notify us that they're not attending. So that's giving us some comfortability that what our staffing is coming out to be will make us feel comfortable. Thank you. But yes, it was a little difficult staffing, and that's why I'm really proud of what we were able to sort of finalize staffing with. and that's why I'm really proud of what we were able to sort of finalize staffing with. But yes, we're comfortable.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. And again, amazing that you were able to find these qualified staff. So well done you. Curious about the, just the increase from, even from last year to this year. It's significant. And I'm wondering, clearly, you can't give details of specifics, but is there a trend that you're seeing in terms of it's more elementary students? Is it, just give us a little more color around that if you can.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think I was alluding also a little bit to that earlier when I was going over those first two slides that I think we're being really thoughtful about our recovery services as well. Certainly in combination to what's been going on the last few years. But I don't know, Shirley, if you want to also just respond more globally.
Yes. I don't think the trend apparent is that it's either elementary or secondary. I think there are more students, a couple of things that might be a variable. One, I think there were many more families traveling and going away and doing things, and that might have been a variable. We don't have the actual numbers, but that seemed to be a piece of it. And I think, as Kristen noted also, we had more students coming because of recovery services. And it may not be that there was a regression or that there was parents, but they've missed instruction. And this was an opportunity to really have that kind of robust opportunity or increase in related services. We had students, I think we mentioned this in another time, who may have had speech two times a week, and now we were recommending four times a week just to recoup some services and miss sessions. So I think a lot of it might be a combination of recovery, miss sessions, recruitment, as well as traveling and local staying.
So if you had a crystal ball, and I'm not going to hold you to this, would you do think that this number would decrease in the years to come?
I do have a crystal ball. I don't really. I really want a magic wand more than I want a crystal ball. I think what we've noticed is the trend is we know how our percentage of students with IPs have increased. And if you look at the difference where from to 17% from when we looked at it several years ago at 15%, we do see that trend across Connecticut increasing. So not with a magic wand and not with a crystal ball, but it does seem to be a steady increase in terms of children who are requiring support services.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Maroni.
Yeah, so I think, I think the response to the program surveys is admirable. And I know we've had discussions on the transportation for a couple of years. So I'm glad to see that we're going to do something as well as the electronic structure for attendance and things. So I think that will give some, some, hope is the right word, but some balance to parents who've been frustrated by a couple of these things. And my question is, do we have other things that we still need to work on our checklist that are still out there or there are other things you're looking to improve on? Or, because last year was kind of a funky year with COVID. So I can't recall from two years ago, what else was on the list?
Yeah, there was something that we had mentioned in the post-program presentation related to transportation. There was an app that's in development. I believe it's used during the regular school year. But during ESY, there was hope that it would be sort of up and running. It's sort of like a tracker app, but it's not, it won't be available and ready. So that's something that we're not able to kind of get up and running. But hopefully for next, next summer, maybe we can get that going. That was something we were looking into. It's just not available and ready yet. And then I think some of the other items that we had discussed are a little bit more clerical rather than programmatic goals.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. This is Cam.
This is a clarification on the recruitment and recovery discussion. So just wanting to be sure I understand clearly. So I think what you're saying is that some of our students are sort of making up for lost time and that they didn't receive services. The other, there's another cohort of students who may or may not have received services but who need additional instruction to, because once you sort of have a little bit of a gap, it has other implications and you have to do it more of a wraparound. Is that sort of what you mean by recovery and recruitment?
That's a great definition. Yes, again, but also just keep in mind the other, the third piece maybe that because there was an interruption, okay, look at it in sequence. Because there was an interruption of service, we went from hybrid or when we had some gaps, that time that's missed, so there becomes a lag. And in order to address that lag, you have to go back and revisit a lot of the sequence that happened.
Okay.
So I think that's the third piece I would look at that might have that impact.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, when we had, when we saw some of this a number of years ago, we looked at a period of time and it wasn't, you know, one or two years. It took us a while to rebuild skill sets. So more than, more likely than not, this would be a trend we would look at for a number of years, I would think.
I would think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cam. Thank you both for that presentation. It's a great program. It's good to see the numbers, and I know it's well done. It's nice to use the high school facility for that. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. If I may just add one more thing. Whenever we look for opportunities, we keep saying we're looking for crosswalks between students who learn differences and students who are not receiving supports. Just a hats off again to Caitlin Statlin, to DSS, to Mark Powers, to Vicki, to all the people who really work with Kristen to ensure that students have access to those programs. It requires externability and scheduling also on PPTs, making sure they have those important conversations, looking at that. So just a thank you to DSS as well in making sure we have that crosswalk to support our students.
Just a quick kudos, too. I mentioned Suburbans, and I have to thank Rich and his staff. They searched far and wide to add the fourth Suburban to the fleet. We got an appropriation. They found one in Pennsylvania. A staff member flew out there, drove it back to the tune of a $10,000 savings over what was budgeted for the vehicle. So never-ending and always trying, Rich and his team, to get things done. So thanks for that, Rich. Who was the person that drove out there?
Kate Barberry.
Kate. Yeah. So they drove to Pennsylvania. All right. Good stuff. Thank you both again. Further discussion on the Darien presentation and discussion on elementary co-teaching self-study. Mrs. Klein and Ms. O'Reilly again.
See if I push.
Charlie, can you stay real close to that mic? It'd be helpful for, at least for me. Thank you.
Okay, that's all. I will stay close, and I'll actually try to speak more slowly, which is a challenge. So I'll work on that also. Good evening to the members of the Board of Education, to Dr. Adley, colleagues and the Darien School community. Dr. Friend, look forward to being here this evening to present the elementary co-teaching study. And unfortunately, as several of you are aware, in February, Dr. Friend was in an automobile accident and sustained serious injuries. We have been in communication with Dr. Friend, and we look forward to our continued partnership with her as we continue to supporting our students and our programs here in Darien. I know that I'll share all our well wishes for her. So if I can begin, Kristen's here tonight as well to talk about our elementary co-teaching self-study. There you go. So we're going to actually begin with the outcomes and start with what we learned and what our rationale was. So back in 2019, when Dr. Friend began the elementary school co-teaching self-study, we looked at it in terms of looking at best practices and how we deliver IEP goals and objectives in our elementary school programs. Our models were really limited to resource room and pull-out or push-in programs. And we really did want to consider the notion of co-teaching in elementary school. Does that address our students' needs and looking at our individual cohort of students? So we focused on two areas, literacy and mathematics. In the area of literacy, we looked at phonology, comprehension, and written language skills. At the same time, we looked at mathematics and the understanding of concepts, computation, and problem-solving, and where was the most effective delivery model for those programs and what setting that we would best recommend. So again, we looked at resource rooms, push-in. In the area of mathematics, we really found that there's discrete instruction that goes on. Think of young learners or youngest learners, learning computational skills, learning problem-solving skills and learning word problems. Those areas, when children were having weaknesses and really did require discrete instruction in those areas. And upon looking at our IPs K through 5, we really decided that those students really, math was best delivered in either resource room model or with assistance with a push-in teacher. The data that we utilized in the collection was students' IEP goals. We conducted classroom observations, both in push-in and in pull-out models. We completed teacher observations to looking at how teachers were designing SDI in both those settings. And also, of course, considered the feedback from teachers and from administrators. The result of those collections informed us that co-teaching in English Language Arts, specifically in grade 5, would provide a more effective implementation of IEP goals and objectives for several students, not all, but several students based on their IEP goals. It also, at the same time, had the benefit of a nexus between grade 5 and grade 6. As we know, grade 6 begins our 6 through 12 co-teaching model in ELA and mathematics. And the question would bode, what about our K through 4 learners? So we looked at literacy and mathematics with our K through 4 learners and also learned that after really delving into their goals and objectives, that most students who required instruction in those areas, whether it's literacy and/or mathematics, because these skills are just emerging, because they're getting doses already in terms of phonology and foundations and other, I should say, supplemental services in reading with our new phonology program with Haggerty, with Wilson, et cetera, that they really needed discrete instruction, that co-taught would be too incidental for them. It wouldn't have the kind of research-based systematic opportunity to really increase their skills in terms of automaticity, in terms of phonology, and in terms of reading. So our conclusion was, and we'll show you how we got there in the slides ahead, that co-teaching in grade 5 made sense for several of our students in literacy, not recommended for our students in mathematics in grades K through 5, and our K through 4 learners continue to require direct and discrete instruction in their skills. That said, in K through 4, there may still be opportunity for teachers to push into the class. And I'll explain the difference later on of when they're pushing in, they're really supporting one or two or three students with specific skills. It's not planned co-teaching with teachers in a more incidental manner. So I'll come back to that. But that was our outcome for our co-teaching model for 2022-23. Right, it's a clicker, I might have. So, on the co-teaching model, and again, I know most people are familiar with this, but just to give you an idea, it's really about planning, designing, and implementing a general education curriculum alongside a specially-designed instruction with two teachers who review the goals and IPs, implement it, and have a systematic way of delivering it. It may be a model that's used, we'll see later on, and one of two that we prefer most, which is station teaching or parallel teaching, but it really supports instruction in the general education classroom. Just to keep in mind also that all recommendations for co-talk classes are made by a PPT based on goals and objectives, accommodations, and then recommendations from the PPT. This slide on co-teaching models in Darien Public Schools speaks to the six different types of co-teaching. This is actually from Marilyn Friend's book. If you focus on parallel teaching and station teaching, those are the models that we prefer and that we've trained our secondary teachers in. The other models offer different, one teaching, one assisting. Might be a teacher in front of the room and another one collecting data. Teaming might be two teachers delivering instruction to both sets of teachers, of students. That happens often in some other team 12 classes we have in the high school. Alternate teaching is one teaches, one assists, and then you rotate teachers. And one teaching, one observing is similar to the assisting, more data collection. And station teaching and parallel are our two best programs. And if you look at the design, in parallel teaching, two teachers are working with small groups of instruction and learning with all learners. Similar to station teaching, where students have the opportunity to rotate by stations and have the delivery of their implementation of their goals and objectives, opportunity to have it delivered by a teacher, by a small group of the second teacher, and usually some independent work. But the collaborative style in both parallel and station teaching are really the most common practice in co-teaching, the most effective models. And if you look at our current continuum, you can see that in grade 5 and to grade 6, they both provide related services. They both provide resource room, although one's called resource room, one's called a learning center. Both have direct reading, and we also have specialized programs. The one area we don't have, of course, in fifth grade is co-teaching, and this literacy would allow to have that nexus between the two. So as we began in 2019, just to give you a brief story, I'll make it brief. We really got to visit the classes and find out what is everyone doing in these push-in models and what are they doing in resource rooms? And we started by looking at those goals, and we looked at goals and objectives and said, uh-huh. I can see if I've got really didactic goals in reading and instruction that I really need to have a Wilson systematic research-based program. But if I'm working with reading comprehension, looking at literacy, and if I'm already working with fifth-grade students who have developed many of those skills necessary for successful readers and being reading proficiency, what in my instructional practices are going on? So Kristen and Marilyn actually had the opportunity to go into a resource room and look at those goals and deliveries and said, hmm, I think for these fifth graders, we could really provide that in the mainstream class and give them that opportunity to really generalize the skills they've learned in resource room and not only practice them, but work alongside the general education curriculum in terms of accessing them. So you're using authentic texts, you're using authentic opportunities, and kids are really generalizing that and at the same time, preparing for opportunities of inclusive environments when they get to middle sex. We also looked at the idea of really informing our teachers. What is SDI, what does good SDI look like? And really understanding that it has to happen in both learning environments. It has to happen in the general education classroom, and it has to happen in the special education classroom. So we look at differentiation, we look at opportunities, and the idea was that administrators and teachers and related service providers had to be really knowledgeable about where can they implement these goals in the most effective mechanism. Then we look at barriers, because you have barriers. If you really need a child to have that small group instruction, then putting them in an included environment to learn that will really not give them that access. So you had to look at what would barriers be? Are there linguistic barriers? Are there motor barriers? What are the barriers you're looking at? And if they are, what accommodations do you need for these students to be successful? And then, of course, about March 12th and March 13th, we went to a pause. COVID came, and we did not get to resume these conversations or observations until the fall. And when we came back in the fall, in November, we went remote for our professional development training as well as our conversations and looking at SDI. We use this time really to do direct instructions for teachers on SDI, to really look at the areas of literacy specifically and best practices of what they can be doing in their teaching and learning, again, using authentic text, if not control text, but other opportunities and resources to really make sure they were aligning it with the general education teacher as well as finding ways to do crosswalks between reading comprehension and literacy activities. We had a very large plenary session, which I learned that when Zoom gets too big, it doesn't work. But in that plenary session, we wanted to make sure there was access for everyone. And we had a very, very informative opportunity for teachers to talk about their push-in services, to say what's working for them or not working for them, and to reflect on what they feel their students would be most successful in which models. And that brings us to this year. And we were back in person. We started with a remote session at the very beginning of the year on SDI, just picking off wherever we had left off. We held remote sessions with elementary school administrators, asking about their supervision and evaluation of programs that we had and what their feeling was about our current practices. We had those conversations about co-teaching again as a service delivery option now that we knew who our students were. What does it look like and for which students and when and how? And then we went live. We went live, I think it was November, it was election day, actually, with our elementary special education teachers. And this time, we took the work from 2019, 20, all the way to the current time and asked our providers to present. What did they know? What did they learn and use to case study? So we had actually two of our system principals, one who's a specialized reading teacher as well. And we had a speech language pathologist do a case study all day. We set into pods of each building had their own pod. You'll see a slide at the end. We set into pods of each building had their own pod, you'll see a slide at the end, and said, here's your student, here's your case study. What best would serve the student in terms of implementing their goals? And come up with what you would do, what you would teach, what your goal, what would you do, and what your goals would look like. And all five buildings had their own cohort of special education teachers. And they worked throughout the day to find out and design would co-teaching benefit their students? And if so, how? And what would their recommendation for service delivery models be? And that brings us to what they learned. They learned about the incidental opportunity for SDI for both general education and special education students who are recommended for those services. They spoke about how all teachers would refine their skills. General education teachers have the same opportunity as special education teachers to really be able to differentiate and accommodate students with learning differences and within the general ed class. We learned about the continuity of articulation and how going from grade five to grade six for several of those students would prepare them for co-talk classes and also give them the opportunity to learn what they've done and show what they've learned. And always, looking at the least restrictive environment is something we consider for all of our students. Our next steps. One is to identify which students would really be successful in co-taught environments, to conduct PPTs to consider the most effective service model for them, to work along administrators, to really look at with administrators to appropriately group students. Again, it's one would say, well, why wouldn't all students benefit from that? Because they're benefiting based on their goals and objectives and what that environment would be. We really want to identify our five, our grade five co-teaching teams. We'll speak to that in the next slide as well. We want to really work with our administrators to make sure they're trained, they understand, and they can make adjustments to the schedule, to make sure that we group students accordingly by ability to access teaching and learning. And we also want to make sure that we have the proper professional development for our teachers. We have July, well, June, July, August, and we want to do it authentically. Authentically meaning we want our teachers to go up to grade six and see what co-talk classes look like. We want our grade six teachers to be peer trainers also for our fifth grade teachers. And the luxury of it's actually the students, you know, to be able to know who's those students the following year will be rising. So looking at our fourth grade rising, fifth grade being trained. We would use our middle school teams, but we also maybe use our high school teams. Our high school teams worked for three years with Marilyn Friend, as did our middle school teams for two years. And their skill set in the methodology and strategy is used in those two that identified methodologies of co-teaching. We have several experts within our own field. And lastly, but not lastly, being able to work with parents. Learning our parents whose students would be recommended, and they'll know because they're at the PPTs, really have an insight into what that teaching and learning looks like, what instruction would look like, and how we're going to monitor progress for their students. And this slide shows you the implementation plan. So our co-teaching classes of grade five, we have one or two sections depending on IP PPT recommendations. We have co-teaching in our teams in grade five, again, depending on the school's one or two teams. Our administrative schedule and planning has to really be structured in terms of our literacy block would be probably a 90-minute block and where that would occur in the schedule. Our ongoing PD, again, hopefully with Marilyn Friend in the fall, and also our peer team training, and of course, our parent coffee series. So one question that always comes up is program efficacy and monitoring. And how do we know that these programs are working? One, looking at student progress toward their IP goals and objectives in the co-taught setting. Looking at their benchmark performance and their assessments within the general education curriculum. Evaluating special education teachers and general education teachers in terms of their effective use of instructional models. Monitoring general ed curriculum and provision of special education services. And that's always done by teacher supervision and evaluation. And of course, getting teacher feedback on the implementation effectiveness of the program. Budget implications. Staffing and scheduling for the current school year is adequate. We're not requesting any additional funds. PD for co-teaching model is already included in our proposed budget for 2022-23 with Dr. Friend. And our budget implications annually would have to be reviewed as we look at IP goals and objectives and see what programs would better address the needs of our students in elementary school. And questions, this actually is the case study that we spoke about. Dr. Friend is there, and there were three of our professionals who are leading the conversation and the case study.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Please give Mrs. Friend our best wishes and thank you. I know she's been through a lot, but she's a great partner in front of the district, so please extend that to her from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So I will open it up to board questions and comments. Mr. Seeny.
Maybe you could walk us through, you know, the self-study was disrupted because of COVID and whether or not you lost anything in 2021, I'm sorry, the 2020 and 2021 school year study through that gap. And then were you able to kind of make up for it in the following study, whatever you might have lost during that gap?
I think it just took us longer to get there. So the gap was really, it took us longer. What we may have been able to do in two years took us three years or whatever the time was. It just took us longer to get there.
So you were able to achieve basically what you thought were just extended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Bass.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Kind of along the lines Mr. Seeny was going, I was going to say, this seemed like a great example of how you guys were able to keep moving forward and get the work done. And like you said, perhaps it was a little slower than you'd hoped to get there. But kudos on continuing to proceed. I just had a couple little questions. First, the visual from Marilyn Friend's book of the co-teaching models that taught me more on one page than, that was just amazing. So thank you. I really appreciated that. You mentioned that you will conduct, excuse me, conduct PPTs to consider the most effective service delivery model or efficient service delivery model. You don't mean additional PPTs, right? That just means that will be a conversation in the course of the PPTs you would normally have.
With the exception of if there were students already who had a PPT, depending on their annual review date. And this wasn't an option. We would go back and review that to revise the IP.
And then my last question was on the parent coffees. Is that, will you plan to include parents of students who will be in the co-talk classrooms but who do not have IEPs?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Bass. Mrs. McCammon.
I have two questions. My first is about students who are, who you've identified to participate. Are, have you, through the case study, identified that there's a specific type of instructive instruction that you want to deliver? Or are you more looking to cluster because you have three kids in a fifth grade class in this building that require direct reading instruction? And so you want to cluster them, so you're, you know, at homes, you'll do direct reading because that's who's there. And at Henley, you're going to do some other, you know, intervention because that's who's there.
It would be at all five elementary schools. And the notion of looking at the goals and IPs is ready to look at similar needability. So if we're looking at kids who are working on comprehension and working on fluency and working on phonology and don't really need that direct pull-out program, that would be the cohort we put together in class. That's why we're looking at one or two sections depending on, there may only be one section at Henley, but there may be two at Oxbridge, depending on that cohort.
Okay, thank you.
And then my second question has to do with measurement. So we're hoping that any of our kids achieve their IP goals and hit the appropriate benchmarks. So, you know, beyond sort of anecdotal, what evidence would you have, you think, that will show you that this was even more effective than what they might have received otherwise?
So there's no, there's no quantitative way to compare, right? Because goals change year to year. So that's hard to do, and you're changing goals, so you can't measure that. What you can measure in a qualitative way also was the ease in which the child got there. Was there a different dynamic to the learning that happened? Was there more access to the curriculum? You know, you can look, it's kind of, it's qualitative, that is for sure, Mrs. McCann. But it really does tell you the ease they got there. So we also know we can measure this. I'll take a comprehension goal. In the prior year, the child might have had one goal, and there were three objectives they missed. I'm really doing that. And in this year, they really only missed one objective. And the areas that you were looking at were similar, a year later, but similar. Okay, so that's how you could probably measure it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maroni.
Thank you very much. I much appreciated the metric slide.
That slide was for you, Mr. Maroni.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. My question is, I kind of had a similar point to Mr. Seeny about COVID and things. But I guess my question is, I don't quite understand why math doesn't work in co-teaching. Could you explain that a little further?
And we'll continue to look at math. I don't want to dismiss it for, but when we looked at the certain, you'd see very fewer students receive math support than reading support. And the math support, when it does reach that level of needing a support, really is about operations. It really is about discrete, distinct repetition, learning the operations of whether it's addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. I'll leave fractions out because no one likes fractions, you know that thing. But, but in the other operations, so they really need repetition of it. And that's not what you could do during a co-talk class. That's not the design of a co-talk class. So we found that it is more in that way repetition and didactic than it is comprehensive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni.
And math does change in secondary, by the way. Okay, because very often, students have acquired those skills, although we still have many students who are working on operations, okay, and computation. But there is different opportunity afforded in a higher level math when you get to secondary. That does afford that.
Mrs. Parent.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. I just, I got a question from a parent today who was looking over at the board packet. And this person said, so does this mean that you're taking all of the children that need special education or support services in literacy and putting them into one classroom? Can you, I know that that's not the case, but can you clarify that? And how does that, just what does this mean in terms of scheduling and grouping? How does that work?
So think of our co-taught models in six through 12. We try our best to limit to about a third of the class is what it is. That's our model, basically. It depends on how many children you have. We're also, we're really picking our teams to make sure it's appropriate and realize you can have, let's just say, I'm going to take four, there are four students who go into one class. And there's a good reason for that. They have similar needs. So when you're doing station teaching or you're doing parallel and you're working groups, that's an opportunity to make sure that we address their goals. It also doesn't mean, and just keep in mind with children with learning differences, you can have an IP and have extraordinary strengths in literacy and other areas, but you may not have a specific strength in fluency. You can have extraordinary abilities in comprehension, but not, may have in terms of accuracy. So when we say and parents ask, are you putting several children with IPs into a class? That doesn't change the constellation of the heterogeneity of the class. Because many of these students have specific needs where they have other strengths that are contributing to the class.
Thank you for declaring.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent.
If we did too much of that, too, we would also run into issues with least restrictive environment, correct?
Yes, of course. Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mr. Brown, I just got you back on the screen. I just want to make sure I haven't missed your hand with anything from the windy city.
No, it was a fantastic presentation. Thank you very much, Shirley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just want to, I just want to thank Mrs. Klein and her staff and also Marilyn and her absence. This is, this is also a board goal. So it's also nice to see, in addition to everything, just what Miss Bass said, in addition to everything that's going on, this is an increment, this is an improvement, programmatic improvement for, practically for all kids in many ways. So it's, it's nice to see that. That's another thing that actually is happening next year.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mrs., yes, go ahead, Mrs. Klein.
If I may just add to that, Dr. Adley, I've had the privilege to work with Marilyn Friend over probably the last 15 years in different environments. And the one thing Marilyn presents, and if you've read her books or if you've read any of her materials on her website, is it's always about improving student learning. It's always about teaching and learning, what can we do? And in my communications with her, knowing she wasn't going to be here this evening, what she left with was, all those great things that you're doing for students, keep doing. So I just wanted to thank her for all her inspiration.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. And thank you and the team for the hard work on, going on behind the scenes around all of this. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you. We'll move on to further discussion on Darian High School stadium lights and possible action application to amend the Darian zoning regulations and special permit number 188-F. We've got attorney Joseph Williams of Shipman and Goodman on the line. Any questions that we want to get his guidance on? One thing that I thought might be good just to ground us a little bit and also based on comments made through the public comment process. And I think it's good just to kind of make sure we all understand that there is a use of school facilities and an application process in place. So there's a couple of things I highlighted in here that I think it's important to note is people think we're opening up or expanding, you know, the use of these facilities. So the Board of Education may grant the temporary use of any school facility for public educational other purposes, including the holding of political discussion at such time the facility is not in use for school purposes. The Board should also grant the use for the purpose of voting under the provisions of Title IX of the Connecticut General Statute. The other thing that I think I mentioned early on, which I think is important as we go through this process, is within here, it's very specific, consistent with this policy, the superintendent shall develop and promulgate administrative regulations and associated forms governing the use of school buildings and facilities by community and other groups. The primary purpose of the school facilities is for education, and such activities will have priority over all other requests. There is an application process that we go through. Use of athletic facilities by non-school-based organizations goes to the Director of Finance Office and Operations. Applications for use of the school facilities related to school-based athletics goes to the Athletic Director. Groups requesting the use of buildings and facilities must identify specific facilities desired, and approval will be for those facilities only. All school equipment shall remain in charging control of the building. So the other thing, just to make sure we all understand, is the eligible organizations. There is a very detailed in Section B. Administration is responsible for approving and disapproving requests for use of district facilities. There is an order of priority here, one through eight. School-sponsored curriculum programs and activity, school-sponsored extracurricular program and activity, activities of school-related organizations, PTOs, booster clubs, graduation committees and similar organizations, town departments or agency activities, the Darian NY program and activities per the contractual arrangement with the Board. Activities of nonprofit organizations operating within the town other than school-related organizations, activities of for-profit organizations operating within the town, and out-of-town organizations. First priority there is to not-for-profit institutions. So I think, you know, as we go through this, again, the goal was to have the administration work through the use of the facilities and building of the schedule around that and seeing where there's an opportunity to make sure the community has access to those facilities. So again, you know, I would look to the administration to come up with some based on comments from the public, other based on conversation that we'll have around the table here that are there some administrative regulations we'd like to see and put in place? And they may move from administrative regulations to policy. That's something the Board can have a conversation around. But there is a very specific application process that, that we go through. With that said, the conversation this evening, I think if we keep this in some semblance of order, that way we'll make sure everyone understands what we're doing, and here's what we're doing. I would open it up to a discussion around the planning and zoning regulation where we are changing, bear with me just a second. Application to revise Darian Planning and Zoning Regulation, Section 405 to permit groups in accordance with BOE Policy 1200 to utilize the fields. It's Section D, it states, "Used to accommodate town or school athletic or related activities." We're crossing out the word "or." Town not-for-profit organizations athletic activities, or what we're adding, athletic activities conducted by private groups sanctioned by the Darian Board of Education. The real goal here is The real goal here is not to have a restriction for FCAC and CAC playoff games where Darien is not necessarily participating, but where we can be a host. There are limited fields, and if there was an issue with the field or a field would go down, we wanted to be have our fields available for those particular playoff games for FCAC and CAC. So I'll pause there and open it up for board conversation and comment around the specific application to revise the planning and zoning regulation with respect to that wording. Mr. Seeny.
I would just say that this change was in direct response to Mr. Manfredonia's request, administration's request. But it's also parallel to the, thanks for outlining the facilities use policy, which has always existed.
Right.
You know, in a general sense, this agreement that was signed in November 2016 usurped a lot of our ability to manage the facilities. And I will remind the community that we are elected officials of the town, and we serve our constituents. And part of our role is here to guide the care custody control of these very valuable assets. So you know, in general, I think what we're trying to achieve here is return the, if you will, the responsibility of managing our facilities to the rightful owner. That would be the administration board in conjunction with the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mr. Rich and Mr. Manfredonia. Do you give any any color around applications that come in outside of athletic requests in terms of concerts and politics? I mean, the only request I know that comes kind of through the board and through the administration is for the fireworks.
I mean, my office and Rich's office talk almost on a daily basis about these types of applications to come in to make sure there's no conflict between high school events. So a request will come in, we'll talk, we'll look at where it falls in the, you know, in the process of order as outlined by the Board of Education policy. We'll make sure there are no conflicts with our high school events. So there's a there's a constant conversation between the two offices.
So I appreciate that. Is there, Rich, is there anything really that comes up through the process outside of our athletic organizations tied to the high school and our youth group athletic organizations?
Just the fireworks that you've mentioned earlier. Other than that, it's obviously the high school sports. It's the DJFL. It could be Long Island Express as an example, cross organization. Those are really, really, yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. McCann.
To clarify, is the reason why I think that for-profit line exists is we do have some organizations. So I think maybe use some of our other fields like for after-school activities and things like that is is that?
Long Island Express is a good example of a for-profit organization.
Okay.
It's typically during the summer that a for-profit and the fields that they get are rather limited because obviously, as Chris mentioned, Darien Summer School is the first priority and the Darien High School Sports are the first prior first priority. And then you're going to DJFL groups, PTO groups, things like that. So there aren't that many opportunities of available space for those for-profit groups, but there there are a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions while we have the Athletic Director? Yes, Mrs. Worm.
So the intent from what I, you know, what I believe is the intent of the allowing outside towns is really FCACs and CACs. So is there, because that seems to be a concern, right, of the public, that all of a sudden we're going to let all this go on, which I don't believe is anyone's intent. Is there any way to put that in there? Or is that just not necessarily, I don't mean in the application, but can we set a policy around exactly, you know, who is able to and what like?
Well, it's a good, great question. Within the policy there, as it stands now, there are out-of-town organizations allowed. I think the goal here was to allow the hosting of those CAC and FCAC games where we're not participating in them. And Mr. Manfredonia, could you educate us? I mean, could they be annually or could they not be annually depending on other field availability or the teams that are in those playoffs?
They may or may not. We may or may not get selected as a neutral site for a semifinal.
So you would just put in an option and say, hey?
This gives us the option, right? And when you're giving, when you're putting your your facility up for, you know, availability, it goes with understanding that your team may not be participating. We hope we are, but there's a chance we may not be so. In the existing policy, we weren't able to to host these type of events, but
And is there anything specific about, are those events generally held during the day, at night, or is it changed from year to year?
They're typically held at night. That's why the need for lights.
Any Saturday, Sunday, Friday, any specific date?
It varies. There's no specific date.
All right. Thank you. Mr. German. Yes. Mr. Maroni.
Surfing yesterday, I saw that. So what I have found, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's really more fall sports that will be under lights. It seems that there's only two field, two teams that will use the field in the spring, which is girls and boys lacrosse. And at least the state, the state tournament traditionally is on Saturday afternoon, 3:30.
Don, I set your mic off. Sorry.
There are only two teams that use Springfield, and that's traditionally lacrosse, which their field, traditionally, at least what I've seen in the last four years, their their games are traditionally held at 3:30 on a Saturday afternoon. Some semifinals happen to be sometimes held at the the higher seed. Sometimes they would have been at Fairfield University or or McMahon, but those are varied. And then the fall sports, it seems like those three, boy soccer, girl soccer, girl soccer, field hockey are the three FCAC championships. The the playoff games for the the fall sports, CAC, look like they're all in the in the central part in Weathersfield in that area, held in a central location. So we wouldn't be bidding on a CAC playoff game for fall sports. It would only maybe be lacrosse. And then maybe an FCAC game, depending on if Norwalk, McMahon, or Wilton don't bid, or the FCAC decides to give those two.
Right, yeah. The FCAC would, you know, so there are two types of postseason plays in consideration, FCAC and CIAC. Depending on who's participating, you know, if it's two upstate teams, they're not going to select Darien. But if it's two Down County teams, there's a good chance we may be selected. So I think this gives us the the availability to to be a chosen site. But you're right, the the sports that typically you would host a, let's say, FCAC semifinal night game would be boy soccer, girl soccer, or field hockey. Lacrosse is held during the day in the in the spring in terms of playoffs. Once you get to the semis and finals, for the state anyway, the FCAC is held at night. So this gives us the flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, just for Mrs. Worm's question or comment, when the board chair, Mr. Chairman gets to it for the proposed amendment to the special permit, it actually calls out those are still, it still names those as it was clarifying that actually, when you see on that use of lighting under the proposed amendment to the special permit that was in the packet, you can see that it calls out those situations that you were talking about, just to be specific about them.
Are we good with your questions, Mrs. Worm? I mean, to to your question, I mean, we have FCAC and CAC playoffs identified as specific.
Right.
And then within the policy itself, in a prioritization all the way at the bottom, are out-of-town organizations. The key here is a lot of these folks may or may not need lights, and then that's an administrative decision based on the request as to whether it would be whether the fields are available and whether it's granted.
So I think I think I'm kind of picking up a little bit of what you're thinking here and taking some of the public comment. I think there's a concern about concerts and political rallies and that kind of stuff. Is that something that we should codify in a policy saying that we're not going to hold political ideas? Or is this?
But it's in the policy.
But we can. We can. But is that something that we don't want to? Like, I personally don't want the school to be hosting something like, whatever side of the aisle you're on. I just think that there's a concern from the community that maybe we should discuss what these fields are being used for. And I absolutely think they should be used for FCACs, CACs, whoever's playing. But is there is there a need to be more specific or not?
Well, I think that's a broader policy conversation. If we want to amend, once we see what planning and zoning agrees to, we can go back to have a policy conversation around. I mean, it's very specific in here, even with respect to the Boy Scouts in terms of fair opportunity to meet discrimination in any other groups affiliated. So and some of that is outlined in Title 36 of the United States Code. So I think we have to be I think we should have the conversation from a policy standpoint, but I think we have to be careful, caution. Anything on your end? I don't think your speaker's on, Mr. Brown.
It was not, Duke. Good catch. Just real quick, in terms of viewpoint discrimination and
Dave, could you speak up, please, a little bit?
Yeah, I'm trying, Duke. Is this any better?
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Just in terms of who gets to use the field and viewpoint discrimination, we're selecting who's able to show up. I guess I would just want to ask from Joe, without getting into a big policy question, that's Joe Williams. We we kind of, that's a big bigger question than just whether we want rallies or not. I mean, we're and that's not just a state statute. I believe that's a little higher authority that we we have to follow there, correct?
Yes. I mean, you're you're reminding me of the case that just came out of Boston when they were deciding whose flag could fly in front of City Hall. Yeah, constitutional issues can be implicated in that kind of decision-making. So, you know, the the policy can be looked at in that regard. I haven't looked at it for that, but it but that is something that pertains, sure.
Yeah, okay. And then, Duke, if it's not the right time, I'll defer, but I would like to make a motion and propose a small change to the language we have in the board packet on page 46.
Specific to this change to the planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay, let's let's finish and see if there's any more conversation around it, and then we can wind up with that.
Appreciate it, Duke. Thank you.
Sure. The other thing I would say is that, Marge, I would say that this use of school facilities and the prioritization we have in terms of eligible organizations and priority use is also given a legal review when we go through these policies, correct? Okay, thank you. Any other board comments or questions around this specific? Sure, Mrs. McCann.
I'll just comment. It's been said before, but I think it's bears repeating that I think the goal of tonight is to get the right governance in the right places. So the hope is that our land use work stays with land use and that we do have a discussion about care custody and control within the Board of Education, which is a bit different from abandoning all attempts to to govern. It's 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 an attempt to put governance where it belongs. And that is the goal and the hope that it is done with with trust and with partnership. And with the the interests of all community members all along the way. Maybe not all of those things are possible, but certainly we'll do our best.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Jill's comments. She opened up an interesting point. I mean, the agreement, which was signed in November, 29th of 2016, literally has a roadmap to extricate ourselves from this agreement, and that's through an application back to the PZ department. So that is found in Section B of the term. It basically says after the five-year time period, the conditions contained herein shall remain in effect unless the board files an application of things on. So I think it's really important, like the agreement that was signed actually that's what let's vote tonight, actually has that offer up for two of them. So I think that's really important to understand. You know, people have the foresight that we did play by the rules for Biden, the town and community. We did not seek any amendments or changes and provided by the rules as outlined by the of the agreement. Now it's time to pick another one.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. There are no other questions or comments. I'll go back to Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown. The one thing that we wanted to do in the application to revise the Darien Planning and Zoning Regulation, Section 405-T, to permit groups in accordance with BOE Policy 1200 to utilize the fields. So do you have some language there you wanted to propose?
Actually, I wanted to speak to paragraph F, sub-paragraph B, Roman at two. I would just move to strike that. I think the board shouldn't limit itself by time. I think the administration here is well able to deal with the neighbors, to deal with the requests we have from users of the field. And, you know, that timeline belongs to the administration. I don't want the board to have to go through this again and or tie up P and Z again. So I would propose we strike that language, and so I would so move.
So, Dave, where where specific?
It's on page 46.
Yeah, I don't have the full right here.
Yeah. F, B, two. F, B, two.
Right.
Other activities shall be allowed.
He wants to strike Roman numeral two.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not, we're not there yet. This is with respect to the special permit. Right? So we're not there yet, Dave, with respect to the special permit. We're on actual revision to the Planning and Zoning Regulation where we would allow athletic activities conducted by private groups sanctioned by the Darien Board of Education. The specific conversation around that was to allow us to be a host site for FCAC and CAC playoffs and championships, which is something we can also then kind of codify in some administrative guidelines.
Is it as tempted as I am to date myself and say, never mind, I'll be happy to defer that point for now.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. So any further board questions or comments on that? Bear with me just a second. So do we want to do, do we want to vote each one individually, or do we want to vote it as a? I have a motion to approve the closed application for the zoning and the special permit all at once. So then we'll just move to the conversation about the the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want the attorney to comment at the section or not.
Yeah. So, Joe, any opening remarks or comments around kind of the special permit application? And our focus being really specific to lights within the special permit application?
Sure. Let me just say one last thing about the regulation, Duke, because the
Thank you.
The wording you were reading is is different from what I believe was the the last draft that I had discussed with Dr. Adley. I have it down to change the language to say simply in D, use to accommodate activities conducted in compliance with Board of Education Policy 1200 concerning use of school facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Rather than, I mean, that seemed like it was more in line with the board's sentiment. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, that you that we tie it to the board policy as opposed to the sanctioning of groups or whatever, because that can happen within the board policy.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe.
And on the special permit, yeah, what what is proposed, which I believe was the board sentiment, is to to remove a lot of language that had a lot of detail about how many teams, which teams, and various things like that, and to like with the regulation to to tie the activities to be used to the board's Policy 1200 to allow the neutral site games for playoffs like you were just talking about. To keep the lights off on Sunday, except for those playoff games. And under B2, subject to the motion that I think will be coming back again in a moment, as of right now, as you can see, the language is basically to allow anything that's within the board's policy to happen under the lights through 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday. And so that's the that's the extent of the revisions with regard to the lights. We also proposed deleting the requirements for the public address system because those can be governed by, you know, the generally applicable noise regulations.
Thank you, Joe. Okay.
Just so you know, I can't see you guys at all. I'm assuming maybe nobody else can either. I don't know if you turned off your video, maybe.
They're they're working on it right now. I can see you, so.
Okay.
And you can hear my voice, so.
Yep.
Go from there. We'll open up the floor for discussion on the special permit. I think we're in agreement on neutral site for FCAC and CAC playoffs under the lights. Activities conducted in compliance with Education Policy 1200. And then B, time limitations for lighting facilities. I guess my question, Joe, is so let me start, go back to you, Dave. So you wanted to strike in B, Section I, Section 2?
Yeah, Roman at two, the two little eyes, just that whole clause. I just I think we should
Again, we just need you to speak up a little, Dave.
No problem, Duke. I I just would strike the entire clause. I don't think we should limit No problem, Duke. I just would strike the entire clause. I don't think we should limit ourselves. I think that job should be done by the administration, consistent with our policies, and I think that's where the decision belongs. I don't think this board or P and Z should put a limit. So, that is why I would make that motion.
Okay, so your motion is not to have anything specific in the special permit related to time?
That's correct, Duke, and I think striking that clause would affect that change.
Okay, all right.
Second?
Okay. Yeah, let's have some discussion.
You need to have a second to discuss.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yep, thank you, Dennis. So, I'll open that to further discussion. Mr. Seeny?
In one of the emails, and I like the general idea, again, giving care custody and control to the administration, but in one of the emails we received, you were going back and forth about noise regulations and the applications. Jeremy Ginsberg, the director of Planning and Zoning Department, he suggested that this board bring it forth in specific times in that email. I went back and forth. So, I agree with the general spirit of the motion. Thank Dave for raising it. I won't be voting in favor of that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Worms?
I would agree with Mr. Seeny, and, you know, I think that if we, one, you know, in, we've heard a lot from a lot of the people, you know, and nobody wants the lights on until 10, 11 o'clock at night. Not that they would be on until 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night, but I just think having a timeframe in there will just make everyone feel a little bit more comfortable.
Thank you, Mrs. Worms.
I agree. I will not, I will not. I think there needs to be some guidelines.
Okay. Mrs. McCann?
Does the attorney have any comment?
Your attorney, you have any comment?
So, Joe, any comment with respect to leaving the application for the special permit open-ended on the timing of lights out?
Well, I just think, right now, you have a zoning permit in place that has a time limit. So, it's your prerogative to ask P and Z to change the time limit, but I think that, you know, the points are good ones, that it might be an easier discussion if you keep some time limit.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Dennis, any further discussion from you?
No.
Mrs. Best?
I would agree that I'd like there to be a time limit.
Okay. I'm in agreement with some type of time limit also. I think it just, it helps to manage. I think also, as I stated earlier, I think this should come up like the YMCA on a regular basis to review kind of how we did and what the schedule looked like. Again, part of this is also the administration, over the summer, building a schedule as to what's needed and then seeing what's available in that schedule, which then the facilities' usage policy comes into play about those organizations that would come in and look to take those available times that are available. So.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's second. All in favor of submitting an application with? Great. All right. So, all those in favor of moving the amendment forward, Mr. Brown, Mr. Maroney, all those against moving the amendment forward, that's Mr. Maroney, Mrs. Best, Mr. Seeny, Mrs. Perrin, and Mrs. Worms. So, that motion does not move forward.
Just to clarify, you said Maroney.
Sorry, Seeny. Must be my glasses. Thanks, John.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, that it's necessary to have something down here because of its absence. A, you're going to put everything back on administration, and B, you're not going to like what the administration does. So, I'm just being honest about that. Having something, whether I agree with her or whether I don't at this point, is, it's just, I think it's fair to everybody.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Dr. Adley. So, I'll open up for conversation around where the board wants to land the administration. Dr. Adley, maybe you want to just refresh the administration's guidelines at 8:00?
Yeah, we would remain at 8:00. We think that is reasonable, both to accommodate the schools athletic program, and it'll also fit in more opportunities for our young people and our youth organizations. And so, honestly, I do think getting back, and you may disagree with me, that's fine, but I do think ending at a reasonable time is important for our kids and our families. I know it's an individual choice, too, but the board was asked us to come with a recommendation. That's the recommendation we heard. We did hear, yes, we did hear the community over the last couple of weeks say that they would like to use it more and more, but we came back with a recommendation, knowing that we were going to be asked to do it more and more. As soon as we opened it up, we knew that. So, I'll say respectfully, we didn't hear anything we weren't anticipating. So, the 8:00 would be our recommendation.
So, thank you, Dr. Adley. At the end of the day, you move it from 7:30 to 8:00, and you put in a restriction of shutting it down 15 minutes before lights out. You're adding 15 minutes to the overall schedule.
You could be adding 15 minutes to the time that the kids are on the field, which is good, and half an hour on to when the lights are on. That's probably true to comment. I do think, look, if we put it to 9:00, people are going to use it to 9:00. They're not getting off by 8:45 or 8:30, and there's something else in place to encourage them to do that.
Well, no.
Or require them to do that.
Yeah, there would, look, if, whatever the time goes to, I think what we agreed to and what I would want to see from the administration is some guidelines as to if it's a practice that, you know, whatever the time is, the practice has to end 15 minutes before the lights are out to clear those fields from a safety standpoint and get folks to a lighted parking lot. Mrs. McCann?
About clarification, putting it at 9:00 gives us the option to have it on until 9:00. Doesn't necessarily mean that we grant use until 9:00, correct? So, if, for example, we have a group that on Monday evening needs to go for a special activity that's going to last until 8:30, that means that the lights could be on for that time. It doesn't mean necessarily that we have practice every night until 9:00.
It will. It really, it will. That's what it'll morph into, which is, it could be okay, because that's the design of it. I think if you're going to, to whatever time you limit you put on it, you got to expect this to be filled. We're not getting into junior football versus lacrosse, or whatever seasons they're in, happen to be on, differentiating between these, or negotiating that, or sort of commenting that, well, this team shouldn't practice at nights regularly, or you should only practice three nights. That's not going to happen. Whatever you do, we're going to fill. You have to work on that, at least on that premise, I think.
Mr. Seeny?
Somebody's got a crystal ball here, I guess. Oh, no, all joking aside, I've been attending wide basketball meetings from 9:00 in gymnasiums, you know, throughout my parenting. I also believe that there's 5:30 AM swim practices at times, so.
More than at times. Those are every week, three, well, we have right here, actually.
So, again, I go back to, Duke, you solidified the thought brilliantly. It's the choice of the parent, the coaches, the league, and the child. And we will give flexibility that I don't think is unheard of, what we see inside these schools. And I'm not even picking on wide basketball. Talk about some programming, plays. They're not every night, but they do extend into, you know, the 9:00 at times. So, that's where I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Best?
Thank you. Dr. Adley, thank you for the additional information I know was requested at the last meeting regarding the costs and logistics associated with keeping the lights on later, keeping the fields in use longer in the evening. Can you talk a little bit about what additional responsibilities lie, I mean, what kind of a difference is there between having campus closed at 8:00 versus campus closed at 9:00, so to speak, day-to-day, four nights a week, beyond just kind of the numbers, if there's any way to make sense?
Well, you just have more people on there, for better or for worse, and situations that may increase some opportunities for revenue through the snack shack or there or otherwise. But there's other areas where we'll have to clean up. But we do, but I'm saying that we do have people who come in on Saturdays and Sunday mornings and so on and so forth. At this point, that may not be necessary to do that. Ultimately, we'll be able to, I think, the summation of that memorandum is ultimately we'll be able to accommodate it. It just, we may need adjustments along the way. The board may want to put on a per-player fee or otherwise, whatever. That's something to be considered. But those things will be ultimately, we'll be able to manage. There'll just be more of it, and whatever falls out from that, certainly policing. So, why do you have more games? We have police at games, so we're going to have to incur that expense and so on. But I can't really give a reading for the electricity use or anything, but just as to what the actual board is incurring, but because there's no dedicated meter on those lights, so it's really hard to give an estimate. So, I think what I'm saying is, yeah, there'll be some things, but most of them will be managed. Most of them will actually fall on administrative with the riches office, the staff down there, Christopher's office to some degree. It will create more, you know, weekend interruptions, per se, as well, but nothing ultimately that we wouldn't be able to manage, I would say.
Can I just ask a?
Sure, go ahead.
So, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is if we're, there's a great recommendation from Mr. Manfredonia and Dr. Adley from two meetings ago about what they recommend and how they looked at it, what the principles were for putting together this recommendation. But, you know, we're talking about trying to get each of the teams a third game under the lights. So, that takes time. There was discussion around if you have a game that starts immediately after school, then with an extended use of the lights, you could probably fit in a second game and get that done, right? A 5:30 game, you could get in. I'm having a hard time figuring out where there's room for youth sports to use the field more, whether it's 8:00 or 9:00. I guess it could be 8 to 9:00, maybe, if the high school activities are going to finish.
So, Mr. Manfredonia, could you give a little color on that? Because the schedule is set kind of very specifically around when these kids get out of school, coordinated with other schools. So, is anything really moving back? And how are you, how would you be taking advantage of a half hour if we go to 8:00 and an hour and a half if we went to 9:00, in terms of specific to school usage?
Well, I think our teams would take advantage of it, for sure, the half an hour. I think to your point, to 8:00, your point, we'd start a 4:00 game, get the varsity and JV game, or JV-Varcity game in, well into the lights. On those days, it would not leave much time for the youth to use the fields like it is now.
So, there's limited time now for the youth groups to use the field when you have run games like that?
Correct. When we have a home game, let's say, for example, a field hockey game that starts at 4:00, the JV's at 5:30, that game doesn't just start till probably close to 7:00. And there's very little time to use the lights. I think there would be some time if we extended to 8:00, but.
And would, would an hour, would the 8 to 9:00, I mean, what's a normal practice time for some of these youth groups, do you know?
Well, I would say in the spring, it's probably a little bit later because of the daylight that takes.
No, would they, I mean, do they use an hour? Do they use an hour?
Oh, I'd say about an hour and a half is, hour to an hour and a half is a typical, I think, average youth practice time.
Okay. Mrs. Worms?
So, I think one of the, you know, a few of the people that were here, the community asking for the lights to be on a bit, a little bit later, more for safety getting off of the field, DGFL, they do do two-hour practices. And I think that was one of their comments, right? They're trying to get off the field with their phones, with the lights, trying to figure out the kids' stuff. And I don't think they're necessarily looking to be on the field till 9:00. Those kids are young. They do want to get them home, but a little bit extra time to get off safely.
Well, I think that's where, from an administrative standpoint, we have to, you know, put in place some guidelines as to when these practices have to end to get kids off those fields. And again, that stuff has to be monitored, and if stuff isn't, if administrative guidelines are not necessarily being adhered to, then there's consequences for these teams in terms of their ability to use the fields. Mrs. McCann?
So, to that end, is the 9:00, do we rent out our gyms until 9:00 or afterwards to the Y? And is that part of the agreement we just signed with them?
We're looking into the, I'm not sure there's an end time to that.
There is no end time, despite in the Y agreement. I would have to check whether or not how late they go. They do have night games within the building, so.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Perrin?
So, I think for me, the issue, I'm struggling with 9:00, and it's not because I think kids should be in bed by a certain time. I'm not interested in the nanny state. But I'm struggling with the fact that the board is potentially going against the superintendent's and administration's recommendation. And this board has done this in the past. And I want to caution that we hire people to make the best recommendations for the well-being of our children. And I don't like the path that we're heading down, and I'm just going to say it right here. I think going against another recommendation, I don't like that idea, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Perrin. Mrs. McCann?
The board insisted that we have two special ed department heads and not one. So, I'm not saying there's right, wrong, or indifferent, but I just think there are times when boards decide that there's something that.
I just, I'm just making my point that in the recent past, we've gone, potentially have gone past.
And I think some of the administration's guidelines came out prior to public comment and prior to kind of people starting to pay attention and really, you know, kind of expressing their feelings around this. So, Mrs. Best?
Thank you. I do think that even with public comment, we have heard that Dr. Adley, the superintendent, has reasserted that he still believes 8:00 is the right time. I would just say that I haven't heard a compelling rationale for why 9:00 is the better time than 8:00. And so, with, in the absence of that, I tend to defer to the educational experts and those who are indirect response, whatever, in charge of the fields, so to speak. I can't, I can't get to 9:00 because I haven't, I haven't heard a compelling reason to get there. And we have, I think, a pretty credible recommendation to stick at 8:00.
That's my stumbling point, is why, what rationale do we have? What evidence do we have that 9:00 is better than 8:00, besides the fact that some people can't make the train? Like, to me, that's not a reason to go against an administrative recommendation.
Go ahead, Mrs. McCann. Mr. Brown?
Oh, hey, I just, I guess the only question I would have is, I believe we heard from youth sports and other people that there was a need to go to 9:00. So, I acknowledge what the administration has stated for 8:00, but there's a reason this board's here to do work, which is oversight and also deal with the community. And we heard that request. So, I don't think this is just, we follow blindly whatever the admin says. I think there's a reason this board exists, and that's to take the community's needs into account. And I would just offer that observation. Thank you.
And if there are reasons, that's great, but I just, I don't, and I missed the meeting last, two weeks ago, but I did watch it a couple of times, and I still can't find specific reasons from youth groups why 9:00 versus 8:00. And if anybody could help me educate on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, the folks that have approached me, or what I heard from the youth groups is they're, you know, it's, we have care, control, and custody. It's a town asset at the end of the day. A lot of what was done up there, from turf to concession stands to lights, was donated money by the community. And so, I think overall, the community was looking to make sure they had reasonable access to the use of the field up there. And I think from what I heard, you know, 9:00 is a reasonable time. It gives them an extra hour or an hour and a half based on how the high school sports are scheduled. You know, the folks I've talked to, no one has said they're going to use it till 9:00 or ramp up practices or anything like that. They are very conscious of homework and kids' schedules, and there are kids that do start at 5:30 in the morning swimming and do other after-school activities. So, I think, again, it's a balancing act. I'm not so sure I can agree with extending it from 7:30 to 8:00. And then, I think it's a good administrative guideline to say the fields have to be cleared by a certain time, and then we're really having this discussion about 15 minutes, which, to me, that makes no sense.
But we're also talking about adding extra games per team. It's not only this 30-minute window, the four days a week, right? We're talking about additional Fridays.
There are additional games included in that, yeah.
And that's all part of the whole kind of spirit, community-building angle of using the lights strategically, which I think is so terrific. And we've heard so many people say wonderful things about what those nights are like. I think, and I just think we're selling short what we're offering here.
Mr. Manfredonia, how many more games would you be taking advantage of up there during the week? I mean, are you necessarily going to switch what are normally day games or afternoon games to night games?
Um, we may. It's nice to have the option.
Right. Well, it's nice to have the option for everyone to have the experience.
Right, right. So, I think the number we looked at was 12 total in the fall and six in the spring, if I remember correctly.
Total games under the lights?
Regular season, total games, correct.
12 in the fall.
If we went to three.
In the spring.
We went to three, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, I think we got to be careful. I mean, we're talking about the same number of teams, like, the same number of children who use sports. We're just extending, if you look at the springtime, late springtime, we can use the fields under natural light till 8:30, 8:45. So, we're just extending those months that we lose the natural light. So we're just extending those months that we lose the natural light. I'm not sure what's going to happen with daylight savings time. But we're, which is another spin in terms of, well, we might, we might not need the lights, you know, looking at the hour based on this daylight savings. So be careful about talking about changing the intensity of use. Because again, we're, we're just extending the ability to use an existing asset, I think it was a fixed asset. And extending it to use by an hour and a half. An hour and a half of what, uh, is, is available. So, um, I'd like, I mean, are we about?
Yeah.
Discussing whether to make a motion to change this.
Yep. So I mean, my guidance would be that, um, we'll look to where, see where the board's going to land on the, the time of lights out. But I would also like to, um, get the board consensus on a recommendation as we go through this process and stuff moves over to planning and zoning that within the next meeting or two, we get an administrative memo on guidelines that would be put in place around the field usage that may or may not become policy. I think we've heard some stuff from around the table and public comment that we may need to kind of be very specific about when people leave the field and when practices end. I think there may be further policy discussions, Mrs. Parent's point on the use of fields. But I think the policy is pretty clear right now. We can have a discussion if you want to change any of that. I think Mr. Manfredonia and Mr. Roodel have stated the, the schedules are tight as they are, um, with the field usage. And it really has been limited to youth groups and Darien specific sports. So I'll pause there and see if everyone's in agreement with an administrative memo that comes from the administration that kind of gives some guidelines, whether we land on eight, eight thirty or nine, that gives guidelines as to how that field usage works. Does that make sense?
I just have a process question to do.
Sure.
So we have to, there's a motion to not yet, but we will be making a motion to vote on this, to send this. Which includes a time.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, okay, that's fine. I'm not comfortable doing it with nine and going against our decision.
Okay, we haven't made a motion.
I don't, I don't just.
Sure. No, understood. Thank you, Mrs. Parent. All right. So with that, I will, um, there's more of a consensus, I feel, around nine o'clock. So bear with me a second here. I will make a motion to approve the proposed application to amend the Darien zoning regulations and special permit number 188F. And that, within that special permit application, the time for lights out would be nine o'clock Monday through Thursday, 10 o'clock on Friday and 10 o'clock on Saturday. May have a motion to move that forward.
Second.
Second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? It's Mr. Seeny, Mr. Maroni, Mrs. McCann, Mr. Deneen, Mr. Brown and Mrs. Worm. So that motion will move forward. Yeah. Any votes against that? Mrs. Best and Mrs. Parent. All right. So that motion will move forward. Joe, any, any comment or any additional, um, guidance from you?
No, I think you, I think you've given me the direction that I need and, um, we will finalize the applications and plan to be filing them next week. Uh, and then there's likely a public hearing at zoning in late June or early July, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Joe, thank you very much. Thanks for participating and being part of this. So thank you all for the conversation. Thank you all for the, the public comment. We'll move forward. I also, uh, feel that we should, I don't know how we memorialize this or institutionalize it, that we will do an annual review with respect to this process and how it's working. And Rich, we might ask for some more detail on the field usage in terms of applications and the who, if applications are denied, um, just so we can get a better view as to kind of the activity up there. All right. Thank you all very much. We'll move forward to, uh, section eight, first reading and discussion on proposed revisions to Board of Education Policy Series 5000, Students 5100, Physical Restraint and Seclusion of Students and Use of Exclusionary Timeout, 5110 School Attendance Districts, 5125 Students in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990, 5130 Student Attendance Truancy and Chronic Absenteeism, 5140 Continuity of Attendance, 5150 Admission of Resident, Non-Resident and Exchange Students, 5160 Dismissal Precautions, 5210 Student Government, 5215 Standards of Conduct and 5220 Student Discipline. All right. Marge, Tara's off, so I'll open it up to you.
Okay, so policy 5100, physical restraint are just stylistic and technical changes. I mean, if anyone has any questions, I'll stop, otherwise I'm going.
What kind of style?
I sort, I, I can feel that sense in the room, but, um, so policy 5110 School Attendance Districts. So Shipman and Goodwin doesn't have a model policy for this, but many districts do. This is in case that we want to redistrict at any point. The policy committee wanted any input, if there are any other considerations that the board would like to put into the policy. Other districts have words like maximum permanency or safety of the students. The policy committee was comfortable that you had flexibility with the current wording. So policy 5125, um, section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act are just stylistic and legal changes. Student attendance, truancy and chronic absenteeism, these changes all reflect changes in the law. Students, um, starting this year get two non-consecutive mental health days. We're not tracking them at this point. They, kids call in sick.
Starting this year, Marge? I'm sorry.
It did start this year. Shipman and Goodwin's policy was a little late, but it was effective this year.
Okay, so they get two.
Two non-consecutive mental health days, which we believe that they're calling in sick.
I love you. Haven't long to use them. There's not many days left to use them.
So do they?
I've got three days left, so.
Actually, I think.
Having a senior down to the minutes and the hours.
I actually has two and a half days left because Friday is a half day.
Sorry, Marge. So Marge, do they, do they specify that those are those days? I mean, do they even know they have those days, these kids?
I didn't.
And you'll go back to the student council and tell them all.
I do actually want to stress, I had no idea that was a thing, so I will, uh, report back to student council.
So the communication from the state, when I look back through our emails, we didn't get the communication from the state until well into the fall. And Shipman and Goodwin's policy came out in December, so, so here.
So do they have two days? Technically, do they have two days in the fall semester and two days in the spring semester? They have two days for a school year?
Two days.
Okay.
Is that, it, does that impact any kind of, of our other school attendance policies? So in terms of, okay, so it's just an extension?
Yeah, okay. Good question.
So the, um, Shipman and Goodwin has also updated the definitions of excused and unexcused absence to revise, to reflect changes in the state law. And some ages for withdrawal of school in the high school have been changed from 17 to 18. A student can now withdraw themselves at 18. A parent can withdraw a student at 17, as long as they're enrolled in an adult education program. Policy 5140, continuity of attendance, we're recommending that we repeal this policy. The provisions that are important are covered in another policy. And school handbooks cover things like transfer of credit and the necessity of teachers providing, um, work or not providing work to students who are duly enrolled. So admission of resident and non-resident students, again, shipment doesn't have a model policy, but I, we think it's important that the district have something in writing because more and more we're, um, encountering issues with people with different residency issues. So first, we're getting rid of the reference to the Illegal Immigration Act because that's no longer in existence. So we are codifying, the rest is mostly codifying current practice, which if a student is in, has finished grade 11, they're allowed to remain for the most part in school. At the, all of this is with the superintendent's discretion and in consultation with the principal at the high school. They'll be responsible for transportation, but this has been going on for quite some time. In other grades, grades K through 11, if it's the second half of the year and a family moves either in elementary school to another attendance district or even out of Darien, oftentimes again, the superintendent in his discretion will allow the family to complete the year. In all of these instances, the superintendent acts with the best interests of the child involved. We have many more.
Question?
Yep.
Is that, so I know that there's, just anecdotally, I know there's some fifth graders that move maybe, or fourth, and they move end of fourth grade and they continue in their elementary school. That's not codified anyway. That's just the discretion of the spring.
That's just a work of practice, yes?
And it depends on the individual needs of the students many times if that's happening. So more and more with the real estate market, the way it is, people sign a contract on the, on a house or a lease and they can't move in right away. This will codify, and this, we've run into some problems here, that as long as they're either closing on the house or the, moving into the leased residence within three months, they can start school here. Cause again, that's better for the student. The more difficult one, again, is a contract for construction of a home. We, we put a three month timeframe on that too, because we've had a few instances, I, you know, I hate to say, but we're, construction has gone on for two years. And when I did some research with the other HR directors who do residency, in all of those instances, the surrounding districts say you go to school where you're living, if construction is going to take longer than a defined period of time, and then you can move in when the house is done.
Marge, could I just ask?
Sure, of course.
So the CEO has to be issued to reconsider residence, sort of occupancy.
So again, Dr. Adley and I have had meetings and we try to be flexible because sometimes the CEO is not within somebody's.
Control.
Control. Thank you. That was the word I was looking for.
As hard as our planning and zoning or building part works, sometimes you get that.
Right. And we've tried to be flexible, but we've also had some people abuse.
So someone buys a lot and takes two years to build a house and some section of Darien, because they, I mean, and they want to move that kid immediately to that elementary school. You're like, timeout till that school is built. Till it's, till it's, till that, we're building two new schools. Timeout till, yeah, that too. Timeout till, till the house is built.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or within three months of the house being built. And then finally, um, there has been, um, even before COVID, but especially with COVID, an increase of people who we discover are not bona fide residents of Darien and not in a good way, in a secretive way. So this gives the superintendent the ability to either terminate the enrollment immediately or to charge tuition. And that, that is a provision that's, um, in both Westport and New Canaan. They have the ability, the superintendent has the ability to do that.
So you could ask the student to leave.
Immediately.
Immediately.
Or you can charge tuition.
And how do you come up with the tuition?
So we have a calculation that.
So there's a, there's. Rich would have something.
There is a state formula. It is relatively close to the per pupil, though it excludes things like special education costs. However, if that student is receiving special education costs, then you actually pay the actual cost of those special education costs.
And they're not subject to reimbursement?
No.
Correct.
And that can be applied retroactively, right?
Yes.
Mrs. McCann.
It's not really a question, but I got a question. So are we charging tuition to out of district students? And so the tight answer is no, but in certain circumstances, what, yeah, can you answer?
So we're not letting them attend school here. We're saying you don't live here, but you've been taking services from the town, so we're going to charge you for the services that you took from us. Okay, so they're not allowed to stay. Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Maroni, sorry.
Just a couple, two, there's two points, I think, in this one that it mentions, um, after a child is enrolled in Darien Public School System, that she slash he is not a bona fide resident. And somewhere else, there's another part about bona fide. Do we have to say bona fide resident? Can we just say they're not a resident? Seems, I'm not sure why we have to say they're a real resident or.
Well, because there are different ways that people can be residents and so there, there's a resident. So we let the people sign affidavits in the unfortunate instance where somebody has to move in with a relative or whatever. I mean, it's a legal term.
Okay. That is cool.
I mean, I can check whether, I can check whether it's absolutely necessary, but.
So you look at, you look at the situation, I mean, is this coming to play when you've got a young child that for whatever reason has to come into town and live with their grandparents, has to be enrolled in school? That's kind of not an issue, right?
Well, it is because we have affidavits that people sign. Because if they're living with the grandparents solely for the purpose of going to school in Darien, that's not legal. We don't allow that.
Got it.
We have affidavits where the grandparent will be the one to make all educational decisions for the child. So they sign that affidavit, the parent signs that affidavit, and having that in a policy will make it easier to enforce.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, dismissal precautions, um, they're just administrative. They vary from school to school and they should be in the individual handbook. So we're, um, recommending the repeal of that policy. Student government, we love student government, but the board shows it's support for extracurricular activities through the budget and stipends and why singling out student government is, you know, is just whatever. So we are also recommending to repeal that. Standards of conduct, we're recommending to repeal because the standards of conduct are, um, covered in other policies like student discipline. The only other thing that we would like, the policy committee wanted, um, input from the board is we used to have a civility policy. We repealed that in the batch repeal. The policy on standard of conduct for student talk about civility. If the board wants the policy committee to consider a civility policy, we would look into some other districts that have them, but it would be a district wide. It wouldn't be, um, just for students. So it would, it, they say things like, if somebody is disruptive at a meeting, you have the right to remove them from the meeting. Shipman and Goodman's not a fan because they don't want it to use the policy to punish unpopular speech, but the policy committee was looking for input on whether we should look at a policy.
Mrs. McCann.
Um, so we have a lot of behavioral norms built into our mission, our vision, our core values, our student handbook, our statements, like the, you know, the statements in each building, be writ, I forget. We're always kind of honest and responsible. I'm, I'm sorry, kids. I don't remember.
You got the manual, that's okay.
And I would assume that we have sufficient confidence in what our disciplinary structure is in the schools to handle those sorts of things. So, so given that, I do, I would not see the need to add a level of policy over and above that, unless we feel that it needs to be shored up for some reason.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mr. Seeny, do you want to add anything to that?
I was just to ask if we could see some examples at the next meeting of that.
So I can bring the examples to the policy committee and, and then we'll bring them.
Yeah, that's whatever. Yeah. Just, yeah, I would. If somehow the board could see examples.
Absolutely. I, I, I'm with Mr. Seeny. I'd like to just see what they look like and if there's, if, yeah.
Uh, quick question.
Mr. Brown, yes, thank you.
No problem. Sorry. Um, in terms of what you mentioned with Shipman and Goodman, and they don't want to have restrictions on speech, are there policies locally, and I know I've seen this in sort of the, you know, collegiate setting generally, with like Chicago principles to protect, uh, speech and/or speech being curtailed. Do we see that locally, uh, in terms of not prescribing speech, but actually making sure it's protected in the academic setting? And that might be for Shipman and Goodman. It may not be something you've looked at yet.
I'll check with them.
Okay. But that might be an interesting conversation for the policy committee, that is protected.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks.
Okay. And finally, student discipline, and you saw that I put replacement pages. I apologize. I somehow didn't get the revised, um, pages in and I'll, I just didn't print out a 50 page policy, but I will explain. The policy itself has been revised to reflect changes in law, so that possession of, of cannabis cannot be punished to, in any, to any greater extent than possession of alcohol. And it, uh, the policy also refines the definition of remote learning and makes it clear that all of the student discipline, um, that is, um, allowed to be doled out here is available to us for students on transportation, since that is part of the school setting. So conduct on the bus is included. There was a question at the policy committee about expulsion and early readmission. That was the paragraph that I inadvertently somehow made a change. There is no change from the prior, um, policy. We hire a hearing officer to handle expulsion hearings. But if somebody applies for early readmission, they apply to the superintendent and it's his decision, probably in consultation, I think, Dr. Adley with the hearing officer, but that decision is the superintendent. That would clarify, I think, Mrs. Best's questions, question. Also, the prohibition on matches and lighters is part of Shipman and Goodwin's model policy. That was another question. And I think that was the end of the question, so.
Thank you, Marge. Again, that was a first reading, so we might, there's some work to be done in the next policy meeting before this comes up for action, based on some comments. Move on to personal items, appointments, resignations and retirements. Marge?
So they're, they're beginning, this is when we would hope they would begin to come in. So it's Alicia and, um, one teacher who's unfortunately not finishing out the year, but a second one who is resigning for family reasons.
All right. May have a motion to approve the personal action report as presented, Mrs. Best, second by Mrs. McCann. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Michelle, we'll move back over to public comment.
All participants, please state your name and address for the record log. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to comment. Would you like to start with in person?
Sure. Anyone in person like to speak? All right, we will move to Zoom, Michelle.
Ms. Louise Waylet Brown. You are unmuted, and I'm trying to take off, start your video. Could you start your video, Ms. Waylet Brown?
Yeah, I just tried. It says you've stopped it. Oh, there we go. Okay, right.
Yeah, we can't hear you, but try again. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
In reference to the special permit, thank you, Dr. Adley, for your leadership and supporting an end time for fields that prioritizes student health. Mr. Danine, my reference to the Sleep Foundation is not spin, it's fact. And as chairman, you should not be censoring public comment. Just because the YMCA pulls kids out of bed at 5:30 a.m. or keeps them in the gym late for basketball, Mrs. McCann, doesn't mean it's good coaching practice. It certainly should not set precedent for what a board of education advocates for, but that's exactly what you both just did tonight. Giving local youth group availability to 9:00 p.m. will mean they push the administration for 9:00 p.m. every night. So in effect, this board just created additional work for the school to have to police and restrict usage in the interest of its younger students. Dr. Adley pointed that out to you tonight, too. The reality in youth sports is that parents feel pressure to not pull their kids from practices, even when their kids are exhausted, because it demonstrates a lack of commitment. So to say it's ultimately a parent's decision demonstrates on your part the lack of comprehension of the fuller relationship between a parent and a coach and a younger athlete who doesn't want to disappoint their coach. I've been there. As an example of pressure, DJFL's mission statement specifically speaks to the word commitment. Given that participation, and I quote, "Given that participation in the DJFL is a commitment that comes with responsibilities, each player and his parents must clearly understand the expectations required of him, including attending all practices and games." Mr. Seeny, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Worm, Mr. Maroni, Mrs. McCann, and Mr. Danine, I remind you, what you permit, you promote. What you allow, you encourage. And what you condone, you now own. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you. May have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. McCann. All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.